This is many of the years the city council and I come to order and the chair calls on me, "You're not my theo, Ron." Ivan Nelson for the road call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
Ancles?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Williams to lead the invocation today. Please stand and remain standing for the Fledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray, Father, we thank you for the opportunity to convene today. Father, we thank you for your presence today. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to engage in the honor of city business. And we ask that you would grant us wisdom, Father, to consider all and make wise decisions as we move forward, Father. For it's in Jesus' name we ask it all. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation and my God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't have a...
That's what you need. I don't think that's what you need.
No, that's not what I need. Okay. That's more like it.
Hey, that's what you need.
That's what he needs.
That's what I need. Chair, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and the council meeting held on July the 24th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, do you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair, entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of July the 20th through the 26th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, and not anybody here from the mayor's office, I don't think. So I don't guess they have any unfinished business. The nuisance on property located at 201 Oakley Drive has been abated by the owner, therefore no action by the council is necessary. Be it a resolution granting a nomad of a street right-of-way for portions of Herring Avenue, this resolution was tabled for seven days on July the 24th. What's the pleasure of the council?
Motion we approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
See is an ordinance rezoning property located at 127 River Road from B2 General Business to B3 Central Business District. This ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. Realty income requested the rezoning for the purpose of on-site alcohol sales. As an existing resident, it sounds like I've already had it been in. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
We ain't gonna discuss it.
You're on discussion.
Yeah, since you've been by there this morning, I think we ought to discuss it. Nah, just kidding with you.
Okay. You moved. Do you move to...
Yeah, we ready to take the vote.
Okay. Take the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New businesses, are any?
Mr. President, I have one. Resolution 294, I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider its authorizing agreement with diversified inspections limited for an annual inspection of aerial ladders on fire apparatus.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Mr. President, I have a resolution I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider this morning. It's a resolution authorizing appointment of Jason Wilson to replace Don King on the Industrial Development Board.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Now move for approval, please.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I would just like to say thank you to Don King for serving on that board for some years, and appreciate the people who step up and serve on these boards that help our city. Thank you.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, is there any other new business?
Mr. President, I have an item that I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today. It's a resolution authorizing agreement with Resource Entertainment for Dr. Zarr's Amazing Funk Monsters to perform on September 7th at the amphitheater.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
What was the name of that again?
The name of the band is Dr. Zarr's Amazing Funk Monster. No idea where it came from. I understand from Kerry this is a band out of, somewhere out of Mississippi, and they'll be playing at the amphitheater on September 7th. But that name, my goodness.
Might want to go see just to, yeah, just see what it is.
I can't wait.
I can't.
Well, I just want to be on the committee to go scout these bands.
Be gone.
You want to take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a couple of items. The first is a resolution authorizing agreement with Barnett Jones and Wilson LLC for structural engineering services. I ask that we consider that today.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for passage. Second.
Discussion?
Got a second.
Yeah, we got to do it.
Discussion?
Councilman Stewart.
Discussion, alright. So this is an agreement with, again, Barnett Jones and Wilson for a structural opinion on the impact of various demolition options for the properties on Broad Street, 431, 433, 435, and 437. There are about four firewalls there that have to be considered and could possibly require some level of reinforcement. So what this engineering firm is going to do is offer some opinions on the impacts of the various options, so much-needed service.
Derek, do we have recovery on this in case certain things fall into place? Do you know? I forgot to ask upstairs.
I don't know. I think it'd be added to the lien in case...
That's what I wanted to ask.
Oh, yeah, they said nothing.
Could add it to the lien. Can we leave?
Yeah, so that's all right, we can add it to the lien. Of course, the procedure is, once it's added to the lien, it'll come back if we help with consideration.
Consideration, yeah.
Yeah, after the owner has a chance to look at it and consider it and argue.
Well, I apologize for not asking about it upstairs. We just don't, don't get down. I appreciate it.
Is there any other? You take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
You got another?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I actually have a total of seven, I believe, but I'm going to bring them up under one motion to consider today. These are agreements with various public service agencies through the Community Development Department, so I ask that we consider these today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider these resolutions today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Again, these are agreements, these are all a part of the existing community development budget, and this is relative to the public service agencies. And I'll name the seven and list their amounts, the budgeted amount. The Love Center, $6,000. Thirteenth Place, $12,000. Mana Metropolitan Area New Nutrition Association, $14,000. Gaston Commercial Development, $15,000. Family Success Center of Etowah County, $12,000. The Council on Aging of Etowah County, $2,000. Way of the Cross Ministries, $12,000. Community Care Incorporated Doing Business as Etowah Free Clinic, Community Clinic, $3,000. And the Summer Enrichment Program of Etowah County, $4,000.
Any other discussion?
I also had Downtown Gaston.
Downtown Gaston.
Sniss DGI.
Okay.
It was $15,000 also.
And DGI or Downtown Gaston Incorporated, $15,000.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all of the resolutions introduced, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all the resolutions.
I think something should be said about this also, how important this is through CDBG money that we constantly fight with in Washington, Robert, you know that, Bob. Everybody here knows that. So if you're listening, this is what it covers.
Well, you know, I was gonna say it later on, but since you brought it up, I mean...
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I mean, you know, we have all these guys who run to Washington and say, "We're going to cut, 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 cut." And the first thing they want to cut is CDBG funds, and as you just heard, the list of agencies that we support with CDBG funds. So these folk ought to be aware of the fact of what they're actually cutting, these services to our community. And I'm not sure exactly how much we got this year, about a million dollars or so, right at a million?
We're down under.
We're down a little bit under a million, but the bottom line is, that's a million dollars that we'd have to take and find someplace else if we didn't get that money. And so people just need to be aware of the guys who run into Washington and running down to Montgomery saying they're going to get everything and get everything in line and cut services. So they're cutting out those vital services to our community when they do that.
Well, it's our money.
Oh, it's our money, yeah.
And I think that when I was up there the last three times, we found out that the senators and the House people from the Midwest and the Northwest didn't even know what we were talking about.
Yeah.
So there are votes, they don't care.
Well...
Thus, that hurts us too. We need to do a better job of that.
I think we did. I noticed when we, of course, when we went up, we had a package of all the projects that we've done, pictures.
Yeah.
And that helps when you're sitting there talking to your congressman or to the senator, that this is what's happening in your district as a result of CDBG funds. And if everybody could do that, then I think we wouldn't have this fight every year to zero out that fund. So, and it's my understanding that due to our, I won't say lobbying, but due to our persistence, I understand that they put some additional funding back in for the 13 budget. So...
Didn't know that.
Yeah, they did. They put some additional funds in.
That's a good point. We'll take credit for that.
Yeah, we're gonna take credit for it, really, yeah.
Why do you think I mentioned it?
Department reports, committed boards, are there any? Okay, citizens' request, Robert A. Popeye Jr. on noise ordinance. Please leave me to your remarks in five minutes.
I'm Robert Popeye, live in 1350 Parrish Street, Gaston, Alabama. I was glad to allow me to address my concerns over the noise ordinance. I'd like to start off on page 10 to give an example of why I have problems with the wording of the ordinance. On page 10, section 9, powered motor vehicles operating and permitted to operation powered motor vehicles to create a noise disturbance across residential world property boundaries in a public space or within a noise sensitive zone between the hours of 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM the following day. Maximum sound levels in a public space during the permitted period of operation shall conform to the point of the audible standard and shall be measured in a distance of 10 feet from the point of the path of the vehicle.
Excuse me, sir. Can you turn your mic on? Nobody can hear you in the background.
I'm on it, sir.
Your mic will slow down just a little bit, too. You lost me there in about the first three words.
Okay, so can I just get my start over from the five minutes, or what do we do? I didn't realize I had to turn my phone, so I'm sorry. My concern with the ordinance is how loosely it's worded. On page 10, section 9, it starts off with a powered motor vehicle operating or permitted to operate of a powered motor vehicle as it creates a noise disturbance across residential world property boundaries in a public space or within a noise sensitive zone between the hours of 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM the following day. Maximum sound levels in a public space during the permitted period of operation shall conform to the plainly audible standard and shall be measured distance of 10 feet from the point of the path of vehicle. Maximum sound levels for residential property and noise sensitive zone during the permitted period of operation conform to the plainly audible standard and should be measured distance 10 feet. What I'm understanding there is, of course, that 10 feet away, you should not be able to hear what it is. On page 2, the definition of a powered motor vehicle means any self-prepared airborne, waterborne, or landborne plane, vessel, or vehicle which is not designed to carry people, including but not limited to any model, airplanes, boats, cars, or rockets. So what we've done is successfully outlawed remote-controlled cars in the city of Gaston for everyone from infants to adults. The same wording is basically used throughout the whole ordinance, so it sits there and brings up the question, is this ordinance not unconstitutionally vague? I think it invites arbitrary enforcement. It basically suppresses my right to free speech. I feel the correct course of action would be repeal or suspend the current noise ordinance until a more reasonable noise ordinance can be written, reviewed, and supported by the majority of citizens of Gaston. I realize the city started to research this when they started the ordinance, and they found that there's a lot of cities that are using the plainly audible term. Most of these, though, are using more like a 20-foot, feet, or more various, because a 10-foot away, that's very restrictive. There's actually been cases, like one that was in May 2011 in Florida, a three-judge panel of the Second District Court of Appeals ruled the term plainly audible is unconstitutionally vague. It is able to be fought in court. I think the restrictions of the 10-foot actually makes it very questionable, and I think that needs to be addressed. I do understand the city had a problem with decimal readings and the way it was worded. I think a compromise can be found, or we can figure out how to get grant money or fund more equipment. I think that's what the city needs, because it gives the city the right to stop a problem, but still gives the citizens the right to be protected from random stops for no reason. I was actually out yesterday on my motorcycle, which according to this ordinance is illegal, but it's legal anywhere else in the state. I heard an elderly lady, probably 67 years old, hearing aid in her ear. She was far enough away that I could hear her radio while I'm on a motorcycle, listening to a radio that makes, according to this, she was illegal. This is not enforceable as it is. 10-foot, and you've got to take consideration plainly audible what that is. I've actually had my hearing tested, and I'm below average from what I should. I can still hear this. A lot of our police officers have better hearing than I do, so they'll be able to hear something. Plainly audible is actually written down as just being able to hear a noise. If they hear a radio, it doesn't matter if it's, they hear a word in the song, understand it, they hear the noise or feel the vibration, it's now illegal. I think that's a little extreme. I think we should go to the ruling on mufflers that the state carries. I think that'd be the best thing for the city, because we're trying to promote tourism. We do not want people coming in this area that's legal in the next county, be hidden for something that's legal throughout the whole street when we're trying to promote tourism. I think that causes a problem. I questioned the first Friday, but of course, written into the ordinance, the city events are okay, but I question the coming and toing from that. You know, if we have the problem, I can't directly ask the question and realize that, but I was wondering if the problem is actually loud radios and open exhausts, or we have more of a problem? Because the banning of remote-controlled cars seems a little extreme to me. And I also don't like the term plainly audible, because if we have an overzealous police officer for whatever reason, and I'm not saying that we have any bad officers, they could be stopping people for no reason, which kind of makes me question about illegal search. I mean, it's a tough, tough, you know, shaky issue if it's Fourth Amendment rules will be violated there or not. I think the idea was good. I think that when it was applied, something happened. People went overzealous in the right movement, they went to extremes, and it's not what the city needs at this time. I'm not saying this ordinance, some of these wordings are wrong. Actually, reading some of it makes a lot of sense to me. I've gone out to talk to people. The grass cutting, a lot of people have... Was that my five minutes?
Sorry.
Okay. I can close there if you like. There is issues, I think, that you should consider talking, maybe in your town hall meetings with people about the grass cutting. There's elderly people, people are sickly, have trouble with that. The power tools, I understand part of it's reasonable, some of it I disagree with, but I appreciate you letting me talk. If I had more time, I could write a one more about this, but do you have any questions? Or do you want me to sit down?
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Could I actually hand a copy to her and anybody that wants this as my actual planned speech? Anyone that wants a copy, be able to get it?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ben, you want to start?
Yes, but I want to talk about restriping streets in the city of Gaston. I think it's something we desperately need, but I really want to thank Ben Thaxton with the state. If you'll come and ride up and knock a little road, they restripped it all the way up. You couldn't even see it. And then when it rains, it's dangerous for safety alone. I just want to thank them for doing that. And to ask the city of Gaston, if there's any way in the world, put it in the budget to do streets like South 11th going down. You cannot see the center of that when it's raining, and it's going to bring, I'm afraid, some accidents. I just want to get that deterred before it happens. That's all I have.
A lot of streets are too narrow to strip.
Yeah, a narrow street, you can't, but you can put up the reflectors on narrow streets. So if it's less than the regulation on it, you can't paint it, you can put the reflectors down.
We just bought some paint, I thought, so maybe they were out of paint, so maybe they're going to do it.
Yeah, I don't know how close we are, but I sure would like to see it. North 8th Street going up, there's no...
Yeah.
Don't laugh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. We actually do have a stripper machine, Robert, in the Public Works Department, so we can just strip our own stuff, and we've done that for years. I don't know why we're behind right now doing that.
It must have been out of paint.
But that machine was really expensive when we bought it.
The machine was going down.
So I guess we need to check on our machine, make sure it's working, get somebody get with Public Works and find out what's going on there. I just wanted to tell everyone, I appreciate them coming out tonight in this rain today, just over the night, coming out in all this rain. I appreciate all y'all coming. That's all I got.
That was a Freudian slip about the meeting tonight.
Yeah, my little slip, I, you know...
I appreciate that. I don't have anything this morning, Mr. President, thank you.
You know, I learned a new phrase for you guys, Ben. Instead of being that fine cuisine where you go every morning...
Absolutely.
I understand that that's where the Romeos hang out.
I saw Fred Huff there this morning.
Oh.
I don't know whether he's a Romeo or not.
I think he could be qualified as a Romeo.
Right. Like Fred.
The word comes from retired old men's eating out.
Whoa.
So from now on, instead of your group being called whatever, I'm going to call you guys the Romeo crowd, so...
We'll take it.
I guarantee you will. You like that one, don't you?
I love to start rumors, that's a good one.
Okay, Romeo.
Robert, we'll have a new chapter with East Gaston pretty soon.
I just...
You're right.
Okay.
Absolutely. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to remind everyone who is interested and who's open to attending the District 2 meeting in East Gaston for this month will be Thursday of this week, which is the 2nd, August 2nd, at the East Gaston Community Center at 6:00 PM. So again, want to encourage everyone to come out, and I think as has been the practice, the chief will have an officer there to speak to a number of issues as it relates to the police department. In particular, I think I've received a couple calls for some interest in setting up a neighborhood watch group. So again, that's Thursday, August 2nd at 6:00 PM at the East Gaston Community Center. As a reminder to everyone, the out of the state no texting law goes into effect tomorrow, I think, so be mindful of that and just know that that's a, you know, don't contribute to that newfound revenue stream. But yeah, I think it's something that we deserve, and statistics show that a number of our accidents, our more serious accidents, are related to texting and driving. And the last thing is, I wanted to speak to the Highway 11 project. It was actually bid last month, and bid was awarded to Good Hope Construction. I think the Gaston Times covered that this morning in the paper. So work should begin. If nothing serves to impede the progress of this project, work should begin in about eight to 10 weeks, and we should be moving forward with that bypass, so I'm excited about that. And that's all I have.
What is the local payment?
The winter.
No, I suppose it started August 1st, I thought, sometime. Are we on schedule? Are we on schedule with the local payment?
The bonds are being signed right now, and the contract has yet to be signed, so we've got to have a pre-con meeting, and then they'll start.
Okay.
But it's in the process.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a, well, I'll just reiterate what Ben said about the striping. Please consider doing more striping in the city, especially on those streets where we have high traffic counts, and then when it rains. And you gave an example of 8th Street, and then, of course, it's South 11th Street, 11th Street, but then Peyton Rich, Peyton Rich is in very dire need of striping. Peyton Rich and Peyton, well, we're going to resurface Peyton Road, so we'll presume that we'll have new striping on there after it's resurfaced. But that is a very critical thing, and it'll just kind of help to keep people in the right, going in the right direction. We've been promised that the no texting ban will be applied equally to all sections of town, so, you know, be careful, you know, and don't get caught. If you don't want to get a ticket, then don't break the law. You're going to get, and I hope they write tickets left and right for people who are texting and emailing and doing all these things while they're driving. It's just, it's a shame that we have to contend with that. The Stroud Avenue project for the correction of the drainage situation that we have there should be starting up very soon. I think as soon as they finish this street over here on East Chestnut, Chad, is that correct? Somewhere?
Between East Chestnut and Stroud.
Right. As soon as they finish resurfacing that, they'll move on to Stroud.
Well, it's the same contract.
Right. Okay. But we, we're close. We're close to starting the Stroud Avenue drainage project. Thank you, that's all I have.
Yeah, could I say one more thing? I want to agree with John. We had a restriping machine, but trouble was, the left rear tire blew out, and one side was four feet, and the other was 18. So we had a little problem with our machinery, but maybe we trained some folks this time. And the longest yard sale is coming up, I think it's Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and I want everybody to note Jim Young and I will be at the corner of Dodge Lane and Tabor Road with all our treasures and trash, so come on by. And the longest yard sale is coming up. I think it's Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And I want everybody to note, Jim Young and I will be at the corner of Dodge Lane and Tabor Road with all our treasures and trash, so come on by. Absolutely. Mostly trash, huh? Oh, the back school? Oh, yeah, well, Billy can talk about the back to school. I like to talk about trash. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, this weekend, you know, there's a tax rebate, the tax elimination for back-to-school items this weekend, the 2nd, 3rd, 4th, and 5th, if I'm not mistaken. So those of you who are needing those back-to-school items, go ahead and purchase them this weekend, and you will save some taxes on it.
I think, I think if we, excuse me, if we get a list to the mayor's office, a genie seeking forward in the public works, the striping we need, since we have the machine and the paint, we're to be able to start on that pretty quick.
Very good.
Let me just mention the, you know, we have, we have a tax, a ban on texting in the city, we've been on books sometime. How very important it is, especially the young people that do most of this, how important it is not to do that. If you have an accident, you're violating the law, you may have insurance problems, you may have some serious problems, the liability of it, if you're texting. And the insurance companies can track that and see if you're texting during that time, which they do in cases. So it's really important not to be texting and driving, because you're really opening yourself up to some real problems if you have an accident. That's all I got to say.
Is everybody through? I saw, I saw on television the other day, there's no law against it, but I watched these people that were talking on their phones and walking down the street. One of them fell in a hole 20 feet deep. One of them fell off the side of a railroad track and fell into the track. Fortunately, the train wasn't there, but it skinned him up pretty good. Anyway, there were a bunch of them where they, they were walking, talking on their phone at the same time and not paying attention to where they were going. So be careful with that. I don't want any of you to get hurt. There's no law against it, but I don't want you to get hurt. I entertain a motion, we adjourn.
So moved.
This meeting is adjourned.